Go ahead and call us to order with that. Pledge of allegiance. Alrighty, starting off with roll call today, we have myself, John Callahan, Martha Majewski, and on Zoom, we have Andrew Jacob and Bob Cooney. Danielle Jewen will not be joining us tonight. From Township Stat, we have Valentina Mitterer and Lori Getz, and then Mike Crady, our town solicitor, and Paul, our township engineer. I also announced that we had two executive sessions, one on March 27th, the other today, April 14th, both of them to discuss legal issues and personnel matters. And with that, I will kick us into our regular business meeting. So first up is our consent agenda, so I will make a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors, March 10th, 2025, regular business meeting, and March 27th, workshop meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Yeah, thumbs up for my line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi, I just forgot that I've got to unmute.
No problem. Uh, great, and moving forward, I will make a motion for the consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report for period ending March 31st, 2025.
I'll second.
Lori, anything you'd like to clarify for this?
Yeah, so treasurer's report for March 2025, we have a general fund balance of just over 5.3 million, up slightly over the same time last month, tax revenue starting to come in first quarter of the year, so we are right on track for where I expect to be. Nothing more exciting to report.
That's, that's a good thing. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. I will make a motion to ratify the disbursements for Ciena Law dated March 10th, 2025, in the amount of $16,000, $16,005 and 12 cents. Do I hear?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is this a budgeted item? Usually it says right on there.
Uh, yes, so I can explain this. Last month, there were two checks that had to be voided due to, one was printed on, one check printed on, or I'm sorry, an invoice printed accidentally on the back of a check, that was the Aflac check.
Yes.
And the Ciena Law check was just, there was an invoice included on there that should not have been, so the amount was slightly off. So we voided and reissued these checks, but these checks were then signed after the fact, so we need to ratify them, we had to correct them before all the checks went out.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, and a motion to ratify the disbursements for Aflac dated March 10th, 2025, in the amount of $33.44, 48 cents.
I'll second.
Thank you. Guessing no comment, same thing as before. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then a motion for the approval of disbursements dated April 14th, 2025.
I'll second.
Anything to clarify on this, or business as usual? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Awesome. Uh, so moving on to our subdivision and land development, I will make a motion to consider the approval of PT Phoenixville LLC developer's agreement and financial security agreement.
I'll second.
Just to give some background here, so these are the agreements that are required of the developer, once they get their approval, they have to put up money toward their public improvements. This one's a little bit wonky in that the developer is doing some of the work, Wawa is doing the other work. We did structure it though, so that the developer with a capital D is responsible for everything, so if Wawa doesn't do something, the developer still has to do it.
Awesome.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by developer with a capital D?
The property owner, Provco, whatever it is, Pineville or something.
Yeah, 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 okay, gotcha. Uh, great, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Awesome. Okay, moving on to old business, with the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company, to discuss the capital budget contribution along with the new CPA and bookkeeping that's been going on. Lori, do you want to kick us off with this?
Yes, so this is something that we've been working with the fire department on since budget time, this is something that we, we work on in our executive, executive committee. So you'll recall that back when we adopted the 2025 budget, there was a discussion around the capital contribution, and the board at that time directed me to budget for a capital contribution, but it was contingent upon successfully working out the terms of there being a CPA in place to help with the improved financial reporting from the fire department to the township, and also help them transition some of their treasurer work as well. So we think we've come to what we think is a mutually beneficial agreement to everybody. The fire department has brought onboard for them a bookkeeper who's going to help with the day-to-day, doing the, the accounts payable, accounts receivable, doing some of the reporting, and then we transitioned the, the concept for, we had Bars Gowie in there before, that the board, the township was paying a thousand dollar retainer per month that was budgeted to Bars Gowie to go in and do the bookkeeping and do the reporting and some of those other things, that now the new bookkeeper will be doing more of the hands-on. We think that Bars Gowie, then, their role is going to be more similar to what they do for us as well, so coming in at the end of, once a month, reviewing all the APAR, checking the treasurer's report, doing sort of, functioning sort of as a controller, similar to what they do for us, a bit, maybe a bit more hands-on than what they do here, just based on the, based on the format. But the idea there is that Bars Gowie will work with their bookkeeper and the new treasurer for the fire department to help produce more profit and loss reports that the board can look at on a monthly basis, look at the treasurer's report, and just see some additional financial reports that we haven't been seeing in the past. So that's, that's the concept there, and Bars Gowie has also proposed to help work with them to develop, or work with the, all of us really, the committee, because it helps the township too, but a capital budgeting plan, so for equipment. The fire department has put together a really great equipment replacement schedule, and I think the next step that we need there is to come up with the funding strategy for that. So, the, as far as paying for it, so the board, with the budget, you did adopt, you planned for that thousand dollars a month, then again, we had been paying that to Bars Gowie, well, we'd been reimbursing the fire department for what they were paying to Bars Gowie, and that was serving as like a retainer. They've now switched that, so they'll charge them an hourly rate, and they'll be invoiced for the amount of hours that it takes Bars Gowie, it might be more some months, less other months, depending on what work they're doing, and then we would continue to reimburse the fire department for what they pay to Bars Gowie. The question for the board is, are you okay with then, whatever amount is left over between what Bars Gowie costs and that thousand dollars, can that go to serve as an additional reimbursement for the fire department towards the bookkeeper that they hired, in an amount not to exceed the thousand dollars that's budgeted for?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with this. Anything to help get the bookkeeping, bookkeeping cleaned up, I'm in favor of, so yeah, no problem at all.
Absolutely, it's what we're, we've been trying to do.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like it's moving, so love to hear it. Uh, anything you all want to add to the discussion?
Can you come to the microphone?
Yeah, sorry, just because, I know.
And then you gotta flip it, you gotta flip it on too.
We're the worst.
Yep, you're gonna push that little button to the side, yeah.
Hello.
You're not allowed to just hike either.
Well, yeah, we're gonna have our bookkeeper, Martha, work with Bars Gowie to prepare
all the reports you asked for in the format that you asked for, so that when you ask for something, we just hit print, and it'll be much easier. We're, we're splitting up a little bit because Martha has a background in doing fire company work. No, no, no. She has a background in doing fire, volunteer fire company accounts, and we're gonna get more bang for the buck. She's given us a great parties. So, alright, any questions?
I, I don't think so, I just, yeah, love to see it.
Alright, thanks, Tom.
So part two of, part two of what I just need some direction on, is how the board wants to handle that, the capital budget contribution. We budgeted in 2025 for a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, not a thousand dollars, sorry, a hundred thousand.
Little, little worse.
Oh god, someone's gonna be pushing a panic button, but, a hundred thousand dollars for 2025, we haven't spent, we haven't moved any of that money yet, and just as a reminder, the money, it's a township-held account for the fire department, so the capital contributions just get moved from the general fund into a designated fund for capital savings for the fire department, which is actually a separate item on the agenda that we'll get to, but, um, we can do it similar to, if the board is ready to start making those contributions now that we've worked this agreement out, I can start doing them on a monthly basis, like we do the operating, the operating expenses, and just split it up. It's about $8,300 a month that we would then just, on a monthly basis, make that regular, regular transfer, and of course, it'll be a bigger one, because I'll have to make up from January, January to April, and I could do that in May. So if the board's comfortable with that, we could set it up that way, so that it's gradual over the year.
I think that's perfect.
Okay.
I agree.
Come on up.
Just in case anybody was wondering, it's for the purchase of future fire equipment. Yeah, anybody in the audience, thank you.
Cool, um, any, any further questions on this topic? Sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement. Okay, great, awesome. Thank you guys for continuing forward on this, I know it's been a point of contention, so I love to see that we're making progress. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, great, okay, so next up is the scheduling of the police promotions, promotional ceremony for Wednesday, May 7th, at 6:30 PM. I know, I personally did not check my calendar yet, but does?
Everyone get your calendars out. So Chief has lined this up, so this is, this is the promotional ceremonies for Brian McCarthy and Chris McDonough and Jimmy Doria.
Yes.
And Chief is?
And Kyle Heller.
And Kyle Heller.
My goodness.
We didn't, oh.
No, we didn't do that.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
Wow, okay, it's taken us a long time to coordinate, it's, scheduling is hard in this township. But Chief has everything lined up for it, he's got the judge, of course, they've all been sworn in, this is, this is ceremonial for the, for the information on the public that. So May 7th at 6:30, in this room.
Awesome, any, any issues with that, and taking silence as a no?
Do you need any help with the planning, Chief?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. I'm sorry?
We're gonna try and keep it a little simple, since we have so many.
Alright, great, moving right on, uh, onto new business. Uh, so first up, I'll make a motion to discuss, or I'm sorry, discuss the possible motion to appoint a chairperson, so we'll have a discussion first. I'm already sitting there.
I will make the motion, I will make the motion to have John as our chair.
Can I second that? I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll second it. Great, any discussion? Get your shots in that way you can. Cool, alright, all in favor?
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great, fantastic. Um, so, vice chairperson.
I will make a motion to get Danielle in there, I know she's not here, but I have discussed it with her, so I'm not, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, have Danielle Jewen as our vice chair.
Great, I'll second that. Any comments? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Sounds good, alright, uh, next up, reassigning the liaison positions from dearly departed Mark Donovan, who's dead to me personally. Just kidding, we all love Mark, he's great. He's still here.
He is alive.
He is alive. Um, so we have the fire department liaison, the planning commission liaison, and the police department liaison. Um, let's start with the fire and planning first, since those are the simpler of two.
Can we, can we just kind of go back here, can we do these one at a time? Is there really a need for us to have the fire and police department, to have two people? Because Bob, is it, Bob, you're both fire and police, aren't you?
I am, and the police, since the direct up line now is the township manager, doesn't require as much as it used to, but the fire does, and I was gonna ask, I was gonna volunteer John to join me on that one, if he's looking for things to do.
So bored.
Okay, that's fine, I mean, I, if that's how you feel about it, so, having John as the fire depart, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bob, I interrupted you.
It's a good bit of work to really get to where we want to go, we've come a long way, but there's still some journey left, so if I can get help there, I think it would be good.
Okay. And I've been going to the planning commission meetings, so I would be happy to do that to the end of the year, and then somebody else can do that.
Yeah, and then reorg, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, um, before we make any motions, just, let's just cover the police department, since we've historically had two people on that, now it's just Bob. Throwing it back to you, do you feel any need to have a second person on that, or you, I mean, from your previous comment, I'm guessing you're fine covering that solo?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Or do you feel it's even necessary with the, with the way we've reorganized the, the structure of, of the reporting structure?
When you say it's even necessary, I think we should always have at least one liaison, but I don't think there's a need for two.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, alright, then, I will make a motion to reassign the fire department liaison position to myself, John Callahan, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, and then I'll also make a motion to reassign the, the planning commission liaison position to Martha. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Alright.
Can I second myself?
Apparently you can. Uh, great, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we don't need to make a motion for the police department, so that's good. Moving on, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Andrew Jacob from the planning commission, effective April 14th, 2024. Do I hear a second?
I will reluctantly second that.
Should that be 2025, just, oh my goodness, yes.
We read this agenda so many times, every time.
We did this last meeting, I just read what's in front of my face.
I was reading it right now too, and I've read it 27 times.
I just want to let you know that I fixed some of those 2025, and I still miss that one.
Fantastic. Um, yes, it should be 2025, so.
Oh my gosh, oh, the next one's okay, nevermind.
Um, any discussion on this? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, Andrew can't serve while he's on the board.
Well, we could.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, I always get that mixed up with the zoning board, yes.
Choose not to, for the benefit of my family as well, and town, like to devote my full attention to the board.
And we appreciate that. Um, great, well then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So we'll advertise that vacancy, just like we do all the other ones, and follow the same process and procedure. The only difference being that for this one, and we do ask the commissions to weigh in, but the MPC requires that the planning commission does weigh in on the appointment of a new member, so it will have to go to the planning commission before it comes back to the board.
Yes. Okay, uh, so next up is, I'll make a motion to consider the appointment of Matthew Budkoski to the Environment Advisory Council, from alternate member to full voting member, effective April 14th, 2025, for a term to expire December 31st, 2027. So this comes out of the EAC, who voted to elevate Matt from a part-time, or not a part-time, an alternate position to a full voting member, so that's why he, his term will be for two years instead of three, or why his term ends on the 2027, I should say.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on this one? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Next up is a motion to consider appointing Jeremy Lot to the Environmental Advisory Council effective April 14th, 2025, as an alternate member, for a term to expire December 31st, 2026. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Uh, just a, another person we interviewed about a month back, looking to join the board.
Another?
Yes, and now, now we have a full board, yes, it's great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, should be all of those. Uh, so next up, the, a motion to consider approval of Guide Mark Incorporated, proposal for street striping in the amount of $6,600. Lori, I'll kick this over to you.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you.
Second.
Fairly simple on this one, this is something we do every year, it's just the relining of all the township roads.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, I'll make a motion to consider approval of CSC Acquisition LLC, Cedar Springs Construction Company, proposal for base and curb repairs in an amount not to exceed $41,000. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Do we have a neighborhood for this street?
Yes, we are doing base repair and asphalt curb on Township Line Road, and we're also gonna be doing oil and chip on that road this year, and we are also doing Trotters Drive and Cleona, base repair and curb repair there.
You know my next question, Nick?
What's that?
When is, when is the date for this?
After school, well, uh.
This doesn't have to be done, they'll flag it, it does have to be closed.
It's not, it's not full paving, it's?
It's just base repair.
Yeah.
Does that end of Township?
That end of Township Line Road's tough.
Uh, it's actually on a dogleg park.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because whenever Pendott shuts 23 down, that road becomes the detour at its half.
Yes, it does.
It shouldn't be that way, but it is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And this is, this is going to be coming out of our capital budget, the money that we set aside to do this exact type of work every year.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to consider approval of CSC Acquisition LLC, Cedar Springs Construction Company, proposal for spring lane curb repairs in an amount not to exceed $120,000. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second.
So this is for a thousand linear feet of curbing, we did, we started this last year, so we did spring lane, one side of it, one half of it, last year, so we're just continuing on this year for our annual curbing plan. And that's, we expect it to come in under budget, but we want to cover ourselves, that is what we budgeted for.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, I will make a motion to consider the approval of Pennsylvania Tree Service for tree removal at Valley Park in amount not to exceed $5,575. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Great. Um, this is for the two trees at the front of Valley Park right now, that are currently dead, I think they're actually dead, finally getting those pulled out. Any questions or comments?
John, that's actually, that's just to have the trees completely removed, the wood taken away, no, nothing will be left, right, and will they actually clear the stumps as well?
Do you ever know that?
Yes.
Yes.
Usually Greg will put that in a quote, stump removal, but it just helps with the aesthetic of the park, it's our one park that we have right near the township building, so. It'd be good for our residents.
Yeah, yep, they're removing the wood.
Great, thank you.
You could probably walk with them, don't flush, and actually, the guy's.
Now, can you come up, can you come up to the microphone?
You might have to turn it on, you have to push the button.
Yep. There's like a little, I think we can just leave it on.
Alright.
Yeah.
The two trees are actually, Civitell or Larry Noble ever owned it, the trees are on the other side of the fence, so you're really not even going to see it, where they're flush cut, but they, they gotta get down because they're dropping all kind of stuff, they're really dangerous out there, so.
Yep.
We could worry about the stump, the aesthetics of it later on, if, you know, figured that, but let's get the trees down, before we start getting to people walking out there and stuff, so, but, alright, thank you.
Is it on our side of the property line, Nick?
Yes, it's on our property.
It's on our property, but the fence is actually on our property.
Correct. That's an issue for another day.
That I will not put in minutes.
Can we look at the ash trees out there to see if there's any more along the trail?
We will, we'll be doing an assessment, it was a little, it's a little too early.
Bob, we're gonna be looking at that after everything starts blossoming out, these trees came in pretty cheap, so we have some money to look at that stuff out there, so me, Lori, and Bob are gonna look at it once the trees start budding out.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick.
We're targeting these first because they're.
High priority.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Any further discussion?
I'll just add that this is, it's budgeted, and it's coming out of the open space, it's budgeted in the open space fund for maintenance.
Ah, okay.
Excellent. You can't put a public notice out, so residents can pick up wood if they'd want it, oak is a good wood for many things.
Well, they're, it's included for them to take it away.
To take it away, yeah, yeah, the logistics of that would be, it's a higher cost for us to deal with that. I do like the idea, but.
They probably make money.
They probably run through Chip Drop, so go sign up on Chip Drop, and get yourself a nice pile of chips.
You know, some of those companies will actually keep that wood, and, you know, it's factored into their price, I don't know, I know in the scrap industry, they.
Yeah, yep, also true.
They can, and scrap it, in this case, they make some worth of wood, who knows.
Great, uh, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, okay, so I will now make a motion to ratify the hiring of Michelle Carroll for the role of financial, or finance assistance, in accordance with the terms included in her conditional offer letter dated March 10th, 2025.
I'll second.
Anything you want to add here, Lori? glowing praise.
No, she is our newest employee, we are thrilled to have her, she's been here for about two weeks now, yeah, we haven't scared her away yet.
And I'll meet her tomorrow when I come to sign the checks.
Great.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize the exoneration of uncollectible real estate property tax liens in the amount of $213 per request from Chester County Tax Lien Bureau. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I've always found this to be ridiculous, but, you know, I know we have to do it, but it's just silly.
We do it every year, always about this dollar amount, too.
Yeah.
So, it's exactly what it sounds like, they're property tax liens that we're not going to, they're uncollectible.
Aren't they, aren't they mobile home, homes that don't exist anymore?
Correct.
Yes.
Oh. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, a motion to consider approval of Atlantic Tactical Proposal for Rifle Suppressors in the amount of $10,736.60. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
This is budgeted for in the police department's capital budget for the year, again, exactly what it sounds like, new equipment for their rifles, replacing old with new.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to consider approval of Cody's Computer Software Services Incorporated proposal for software upgrade in the amount of $7,250. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
This was also planned for in the 2025 budget, we knew that this was coming, it's actually a transition that, it's not optional for us, it's, they're requiring it, they're going to the cloud, right, so it's a software upgrade for cloud storage.
So with the move to cloud storage, are you all going to save any costs on like local hardware, because I'm assuming you're housing all this information locally right now downstairs and some server rack somewhere?
Yeah, we have a server downstairs for that.
I think you have to turn that on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it on?
We left it on.
It is on. And the second part of that is, the federal government for years and years and years has required universal crime reports to be submitted every month. We submit them to the Pennsylvania State Police and then they submit them to the federal government. They're changing that reporting system and our current software isn't able to do that reporting, so it's a double, double improvement, basically.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I will make a motion to authorize the township manager to obtain appraisal for parcel Q in an amount not to exceed $7,500. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I'll let Bob take credit for that one.
Anything, anyone wants to discuss on this, or are we...
We really can't.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I ask.
For, and it's for open space, so this will also come out of the open space fund.
Yes, yep. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Make a motion to authorize the township manager to close open space bond proceeds account with Pliget.
I'll second.
I feel like I'm a broken record tonight saying it's exactly what it sounds like, but this was the account that we opened when we sold the bonds for the acquisition of Sedgley Farms, so the funds were deposited into this Pliget account, we have spent all of those funds on the acquisition, so we no longer need the account, but I do need your authorization to close the account.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, I'll make a motion to consider approval of Whitmoyer Auto Group quote for police vehicle replacement in the amount of $43,500. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Lori, anything you want to clarify on this one?
Yep. It is budgeted for, so this, it's part of our, the police department's vehicle replacement plan, they generally budget to replace one vehicle each year, this is the one that's up on the list, they're replacing a 2018 Chevy Tahoe that has about 90,000 miles on it, which is actually above what we, well above what we usually keep them until, so it is, it is very much needed.
And you said this was a scheduled replacement, not car died?
Correct, nope, we planned.
Okay, excellent.
Lori, I noticed there was a trade-in value assigned to that, is that typical that we accept whatever they offer, or do we go out and sell them on municipal at any time?
I didn't hear the second part of what you said.
I noticed there's a trade-in value.
Oh, yeah. We did, um, it's case by case, case by case basis, for police vehicles, we do tend to trade them in instead of putting them on municipal because it would take us a fair amount of effort to get it ready to sell ourselves. In this particular case, we got a pretty good value on the trade-in, so it helped our bottom line on the budget, so it made sense to do it this way.
And to, what Lori said about it taking time and effort, we did that a couple times when we put it on municipal, and it was a pain in the neck for the police force to deal with.
Yeah, and we also have to advertise that when we put it out, so that's additional costs there for us to put it in the newspaper, put it up on municipal, so in this case, it made sense for us to trade it in, I don't think we would have gotten more money selling it than we're getting on the trade-in.
Does the dollar amount here include the sellback value or the trade-in value?
That reflects the trade-in, yeah.
Okay. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, I'll make a motion to consider approval of KML Transport LLC quote for police vehicle replacement upfitting in the amount of $20,939.57. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
And not a penny more.
That is what it costs to make that Tahoe into a police vehicle. It's also budgeted.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, next up is a discussion to transition township accounting software to QuickBooks.
Yes, so we've been talking about this for quite a while, we built into the budget this year a transition to new accounting software, the program that the township uses and has used for a very long time is just, it's outdated, it's clunky, it doesn't really meet our needs. Now, of course, having been without a person, a full-time person filling that role for a bit of time, we didn't want to make the switch, but now that Michelle is here, that you also graciously approved ratifying her employment a few items ago, we're ready to make the switch. QuickBooks seems well suited for our needs, it's complex enough that we can get the reporting capabilities that we need out of it, I don't think you'll notice much of a difference between the reports you're accustomed to seeing and what QuickBooks can produce, except that they are more customizable than what we currently have and easier, easier to use. Another big selling point for QuickBooks for us, number one, our current system is not very intuitive, it's difficult to work in. So this will be a huge improvement in that regard, but it will also give us the capability to start accepting credit card payments, which is huge and something that has been on our list of, you know, goals for quite, quite some time here, so that will, that will help further modernize us here.
And Lori, isn't it also true that most of the municipalities that surround us use QuickBooks?
Yeah.
So this is not something that's brand new that
No.
Skookle Township is doing?
No, no, lots of surrounding municipalities, especially those that are similar in size to us, when you get to bigger places, you see the more complex government-specific programs, it's just not something that we need, you'll pay a lot more and have a lot more capabilities than we're going to need here, our finances are complex, but not to the point that we really need a huge behemoth of a, of an accounting program, we just need something functional that gives us the data that we need easier than we're currently able to obtain it. The reason there's no motion listed here is because the cost is negligible, it's less than, it's about $2,000 for the rest of this year and going forward, there's not much cost difference from, from what we are currently paying, so it's within my, it's within my spending authority, but I wanted to bring it to the board so that you all were aware that the switch was happening and see if anybody had any comments, questions about it, we're pretty much ready to go, so following this meeting, Michelle is ready to make that transition, and this is also something that Bars Gowie has recommended to us many times, and they have handled the transition, so they're also queued up to support her should she need it.
Awesome.
That's a great read.
Yeah, we're excited.
You know it, you know it has to be bad if you say that you're excited to change accounting software.
Yeah, I know.
Speaks volumes. Did you have amounts for these?
We need to discuss it first, we see if you all agree to the amounts, but yeah.
Sounds good, alright. Well then, before I make a motion, we can start a discussion on the deposit employer contribution.
Yes.
The general fund, yes.
So earlier, or last week, my days are all, last week we had our first quarterly pension committee meeting of the year where we, we staff and CBiz, our pension investment advisor, come in and they give us an update on the market and what our, how our fund is performing, and we make decisions on the, on the strategy for investment and if we want any change to be made, and the discussion came up with the state of the market being as uncertain as it is currently, I'll start by saying we are in very good shape, this township has made very good investment decisions over the years, we've been conservative, our assumed interest rate has been below what many of our neighbors have, have done, so that has, that has served us very well and has helped us to be in a good position right now where many others are, you know, struggling with the state of, of the investment market, obviously. So however, having said that, CBiz did make the recommendation that we might want to consider splitting up our deposits into the MMO, or splitting up our MMO deposits into the pension funds, typically, over the last couple of years, we've waited until our state aid has come in to put our MMO in, in the pension plans, and that usually comes in September, October.
And now they're telling us they want us to do more? Do you know that...
Not more.
No, no, no.
Earlier.
Okay.
This is like dollar cost averaging, if you will, and in a down, and, sorry Bob, if you want to go ahead, but in a down market, if, yeah, if the market continues to go down, making, if you buy at a point in the market and the market keeps going down, you're finally at a high and you automatically lose money, and to benefit the pensioners, the market keeps going down, it benefits to do 100,000 here, 100,000 here, 100,000 here, so that way the total price evens out to a best average price for the, for the pensioners, so it's a smart recommendation in a down market, I am actually a CFA charter holder, analyst, and it's what I do for a living, and I agree with what they recommend.
Okay, I'm fine with this, it's just that I was on this committee several years ago, and they told us to stop doing it more and do it less.
And that might have made sense based on where the market was at that time and how funded we were.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just...
Yeah, it certainly changes, they've not, this is the first time that they've made that recommendation since I've been here, so it's totally in response to, or, I shouldn't say in response to, but it's, it's because of where the market is right now.
Okay.
And it's something I brought up and they agreed with, that, you know, talking to the financial companies I work with, you know, like Andrew was saying, it's better to put something in, in a down market and just keep on nicking away at it rather than a big lump, and risking that you're putting it in at a high, you know, higher water mark.
I want you guys to, I'm not against doing this, it's just, we were doing this and the recommendation was for us to stop doing it, and that's why we were doing what we were doing. Okay, okay.
And that's precisely why...
It's the exact opposite in a down market.
Yeah, and that's why the committee...
Markets buy low so high, and really when you get down to market going up like it has been, it's better to do that one shot, because if the market keeps going up, you just bought low.
Okay.
And that's the point of the committee, so that we can make these decisions as, as time goes on, so the discussion was, we, we thought, split it up into thirds, so make a deposit, now, by the way, this is, it's the exact same amount of money that we budgeted for, so it's not any more money that we're putting in, it's just splitting up the way that we're paying it, so our total MMO for 2025 for the police pension plan is $218,378. If we break that up into thirds, then the, we would make a deposit in April of $72,792.66, and then in July, and then in October, and our state aid comes in in September, and we did discuss, because we talked about, we can decide at that point, too, depending on where we are with the budget and how the pension is looking, because we did have a discussion earlier during budget time as to whether or not we were going to adopt the MMO based on smoothing or based on market value, we adopted it based on smoothing, which is the lesser dollar amount, so if it looks like we need to put more money into the pension fund at that point, we can, and this strategy might in fact help us feel a slightly lesser blow if we did want to make that additional deposit at that point. So for the police pension fund, if everyone's in agreement with splitting it up into thirds, that amount is $72,792.66, and for the non-uniform pension, that total MMO is $82,448, so splitting that into thirds would be $27,482.66.
We haven't done the motion yet, we're just in discussion, so to do the motion, you could say the, make the...
Can I give the total and say thirds, or do I have to give the thirtied amount?
Total and the thirds.
Okay, I'm sorry, could I get the totals one more time, because I put the thirds in? That's the third, that's the thirtied value, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, but you could just make the motion to be deposited in April and in July and in October to satisfy the MMO.
Yeah, you just plug those numbers right to these two numbers, that's fine.
And that goes into number 21, John?
Yeah.
Not 20?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
20 is the 27, 42.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm sorry, is it April, July, and September?
April, April, July, October, because the state aid usually comes in in September and usually deposits in October.
Right, 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 okay. Okay, any further discussion, or should I go ahead and make a motion?
Make the motion.
Alright, I will make a motion to authorize the township manager to deposit an employer contribution of $27,482.66 from the general fund into the non-uniform pension plan to satisfy a portion of the 2025 MMO for the months of April, July, and October.
I'll second.
On the months, April, July, October, cool. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, and then I will make a motion to authorize the township manager to deposit an employer, employer contribution of $72,792.66 from the general fund into the police pension plan to satisfy a portion of the 2025 MMO on, on the months April, July, and October. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. I'll let Andrew take that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, I'll then make a motion to authorize the township manager to transfer balance of the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company capital funds from Truist to Pliget.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I want to tell them to the second page.
Yeah. Anything you want to add for this, Lori, I mean, is what we were going over before?
Yeah, I kind of hit on it earlier, I am recommending that we move the fire department's capital funds from Truist where we're getting 0.4% interest to Pliget where we could get as high as, as of today, 4.42% interest, it's an account that you don't see a lot of spending out of, so it would be great for, if we could earn them some more free money.
Yeah, absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'll make a motion to authorize the township manager to close Truist account, to close the Truist account for Valley Forge Fire, Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company capital account. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Guessing no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent, alright, moving on to resolutions and ordinances, I will make a motion to consider the adoption of resolution number 2025-12 PA Small Water and Sewer Grant Application.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anything you want to go over, well, do you want to take these, Lori, or is that...
Yeah, I think Paul and I will tackle this one together, so this is, this is the grant that we're applying for, we're preparing to apply for, the application is due April 30th, this is for the stormwater improvements on Jug Hollow that Paul discussed, I think at the last business meeting, he gave you the general overview, and he also reviewed it with the planning commission in March, I believe.
Correct.
So this is a requirement to apply for the grant, and the cost estimate is about $366,000, 388.
Eighty-eight, yeah.
So $388,000. It does, um, this grant does require, and you'll probably, Martha, you'll remember this from the Paul Lehman grant. This is the grant that funded the Paul Lehman project that we did. Um, it does require a minimum of a 15% match, so we will have to commit to a 15% match. Um, we can absorb that in the budget, although I don't anticipate, even if we get this awarded, I don't anticipate this being something that we would spend until 2026.
And just so the board is aware, the planning, this was reviewed at the planning commission, and the planning commission made a recommendation to approve it too. So I was going to do that in a two-minute report, but never mind, I'll do it now.
Yeah, and I'd just add, uh, subsequent to the planning commission meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with Nick and Bob, uh, to go over the, the plans, the two alternates, and they offered their opinion. So the plan that was presented to the supervisors has been revised based off of their input and their, and their requests, and uh, and it still holds true to what the planning commission recommended. It was one of the two alternates, so just wanted to clarify that.
And Jug Hollow Road is one of the roads in the township where we have the most significant issues with stormwater. So while um this project, we don't presume to say that this is going to solve all of the issues out there. It certainly would be a, a large improvement if we can get awarded the, the funds. So it's been on our list to target for grant opportunities if we can, if we can get it.
Yeah, i- it shouldn't be construed as a stormwater management plan. It's more of a replacement of some failing infrastructure and some rotting old CMP pipes and things like that. And, and again, Nick had worked out some different geometries based off of all the years of remediation process that he has gone through, and that's been incorporated to the design.
Uh, will the grant itself cover the cost of the project sans the 15% match? Or may it?
Fifteen.
Yeah, 15% match, yeah.
Uh, yes, aside from the 15% match, yes.
Cool.
Yeah, correct. We prepared an engineer's estimate based off of today's current construction costs, and we all know that's a little bit of a scary avenue to roll through, but you know, we, we did try to take into account what's been going on, et cetera. So uh, you know, as soon as we get the grant and then we can put it out to bid, then we would have the firm engineering and design numbers.
Assuming it's awarded in the amount that we asked for, of course.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
So Paul, right now, uh, these pipes are collapsing, is that contributing to the water backing up? And this will, this will allow a bit more flow and some of the flooding?
Uh, Bob, what, what it will do is, it, the new pipe, which will be plastic pipe, which will have a longer life than the CMPs, it'll help convey the water uh at a quicker pace. In addition to the, to the design of this, uh, we are going to armor with some additional riprap. A lot of the ending, end wall structures are being replaced, as well as there's one tough angle that the water goes and it hits a, an old L-shaped end wall. And uh, it was the recommendation that uh, we put in a, like a slightly upstream end section going into a storm manhole. So that storm manhole will be the ability to channel the water without the water having to go right into the orifice and have to make a, make a sharp left. So it's going to, it's going to work much better than it presently exists.
Okay.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. I will make a motion to consider the adoption of resolution 2025-13 DCNR C2P2 grant application.
I'll second.
This is the application that we, um, that we submitted to DCNR. This is for the retroactive um grant funding that we're seeking towards the acquisition of Sedgley Farms.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to consider adoption of resolution number 2025-14, Amending Procedures and Rules for Compliance with RTK Laws, Right to Know Laws. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
This is just a small administrative update. Um, we are changing the police department, the right-to-know officer from the chief to the lieutenant, and the chief is becoming the alternate.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion to consider adoption of resolution 2025-15 Record Destruction. Do I hear a second?
I'll second this. I'm sure you're, I'm absolutely sure that you're happy about this, and I'm not being sarcastic at all whatsoever.
This has been the best day of my life.
Um, yeah. That's not an exaggeration. This has been a long time coming.
Put that in the minutes. Valentina says, this is, this is the best day of her life.
I might say no.
It, this is just a simple update. We're going through, we, we're still working through our digitizing all of our township records. Uh, you already adopted one of these resolutions. The time that has passed, we had an opportunity to add a couple more on to there, because they're also within the time period to be destroyed. So that's the reason for this.
So do you have somebody come here?
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Oh, that's good.
Yep.
Now, I'm sure Nick's happy about that. You don't have to load the truck up and take it somewhere.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. I'll make a motion to consider the adoption of ordinance number 2025-01, Amending Police Pension Ordinance.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Um, these are the number five and number six. Both of these ordinances are, these were advertised at the last meeting or two meetings ago. Um, this is to make the changes as, that were negotiated in the last collective bargaining agreement. So this ties the ordinance updates into what was negotiated in the contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And a motion, a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2025-02, Amending Act 44 Drop Ordinance. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Okay, I'll give him credit for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And with that, we are on to two-minute reports. Uh, so we will start with our Zoom friends. Uh, Andy, or no, you're not a liaison for anything right now. So we'll start with you, Bob.
All good. What's going on with the open space? Plenty of activity. You can see there's some uh, crazles being uh, put out there, and um, great meeting with fire property as well as the pension. Everything's looking good.
Great, excellent. Martha, anything from yourself?
So the historical commission uh discussed um the plans for the, I'm echoing, uh, the plans for the 225th that they have, and they are slowly, very slowly moving forward with the um ordinance uh change for the mid-century modern stuff, but I don't see that happening. It's not going to happen soon. It's, it's in the future, so, but, but it is moving forward. So that's the historical commission. Uh, the planning commission, we already discussed both of those things tonight, so I don't think I need to go over that again. Um, Valentina and I attended the um
Chester County.
Chester County Solid Waste Authority Quarterly Meeting, I guess, that they have, uh, to discuss textile um recycling and to discuss our um relationship that we started with HelpSee and how it went with them. And there were 10 other municipalities there.
At least.
And um every single one of them said that they were interested in doing this. So us being the um point people for this and, and starting this in Chester County has been a really good thing. Uh, one other thing, Lori, I wanted to let you know, when we went to go see HelpSee, uh, they talked about the three options for the events that they do. They do events, the drop boxes, and curbside pickup. We have not discussed curbside pickup because um HelpSee is not, or had at the time, not had a presence in Chester County. Nicole said, please do, please uh let your residents know so that we can start to have curbside pickup available. Um, it is free. So all our residents have to do is contact HelpSee, and they will schedule um a curbside pickup for them.
Without us contracting with them? I thought we had to contract.
We do have to contact them, but um
Okay.
To contract.
We have to, we have, we have to contract with them before we tell residents we can do this.
Right.
But it is something that is available now, when it wasn't a year ago.
Okay, got it, yeah.
That's what I meant. So that was a good thing. And we had a litter pickup. Um, when was that? Two weeks ago?
April 5th.
April 5th?
Mm-hmm.
And um, it was very successful. We collected 50 bags at 20 pounds a bag and about half a car body. Um, no tires, Nick. Um, and I have to say, the hero of the day was Evan. He um prevented a uh, a tractor trailer from driving into the bridge. So.
Everyone thanked you.
But yours is fire engine red, okay? But uh, it was a successful pickup. We um, literally, we put the last bag of trash in the dumpster, and we got into our cars and it started to rain. So we got so lucky with the weather. It was perfect, and uh, there were no injuries. Everybody was happy, and thanked the fire police for their help. They did a excellent, excellent, excellent job. So that's all I have. That was more than two minutes, sorry.
Totally fine. Um, the, the one thing I'll add for the AC is they have a volunteer township cleanup happening behind the administration building May 10th at 9:00 AM. If you're interested to pull invasives off of Aqua's property that runs back there. Um, I was at the PRPC this week, filling in for, not this week, um, last month, filling in for Danielle. Uh, not too much notable to come out of that. Uh, right now, they're working through a land use plan, um, and basically looking at all the zoning across all the local municipalities, trying to get in alignment of where there are gaps between what we're all doing around the Phoenixville area. Um, so they, they're in a pretty good spot with that. They have the plan filled out and have identified some gaps, and now we're kind of discussing, like, for those townships who are out of alignment, like, start looking to get into alignment. Um, so pretty good project. Happy to see that's moving forward. Um, yeah, that's about it from the planning commission, or the regional planning commission, I should say. Lori, Township Manager.
Yes, so um, just in follow-up, so we had at our workshop last month, we had the sidewalk, sidewalk meeting, which I thought was very successful, went very well. Uh, we are scheduling a second meeting. Uh, we discussed then that we did not need to wait for another workshop to open up. So staff is thinking Wednesday, April 30th at 6 o'clock. So we're not going to advertise this publicly as a voting meeting. So one or two board members, you guys can decide who, if two, one or two of you want to attend, or if none of you want to attend, it's going to be a, a staff working session with the engineers that will meet with the residents. Um, a bit more of a technical meeting than the previous one.
You said at 6?
Yeah, 6 o'clock. So I don't need to know right now who, if any of you wants to attend that meeting, um, but we are thinking April 30th at 6 o'clock. So we'll do the same thing as before. We'll let the property owners know. We got many of their emails from the last meeting, um, so we'll put it out there so that we can get, get them in here and start getting some of the consent letters taken care of.
You're going to mail out notification to all the affected properties, like for the original workshop?
Um, we, it depends on, we'll go through our list and see those who haven't contacted us since then, and we'll mail them. Um, but other than that, we'll probably just email the ones that we told last time that we would email them about the date.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are you saying that we can't have a quorum? Or that we can't, so we can't have all five of us here and sit in the audience?
No.
Okay. I don't need to pretend.
Yeah, we can decide. We don't have to decide now.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
So that's our plan for that, to keep that project moving forward. Um, we also, uh, in your, in the board's workspace, so the Valley Forge Sewer Authority is working on an updated 537 plan. We've talked about this many times before. We have an update now. Um, Paul has a meeting with them tomorrow to get sort of an executive summary of the summary. It's a very large document, so he's, he's going to get the rundown. Um, it is available for public review. It's been advertised. It's available here at the building for public review. What we now are tasked with doing, and we're on a bit of a tight timeframe here, the sewer authority has asked for municipal comments slash questions. Um, so you all have the document available to you. If you want to take a look, if you have any questions, you have any comments, concerns, anything, uh, send them to me, and I'll compile them, and I'll go to the sewer authority with them. Uh, we will need to submit a letter. You'll have to adopt a resolution. That's not going to happen until June. Um, but between now and then, they're asking for a letter from the planning commission and a letter from the board of supervisors saying you either have no comments or questions, or listing out what your comments slash questions are. So the, you have the document. The document's also available here for anybody in the public to look at as well. So as you look through it, and like I said, Paul's going to put together some additional information too. That's what I'm looking for, is just if you have any specific questions or comments. That's it for me. Great.
Paul, anything from yourself?
I was going out of order. I'm just going down the board line.
Fair enough, fair enough. Uh, well, first, I would just, I want to express my apology to the Township Board of Supervisors, Lori, Valentina, and the Township residents about being unable to attend the sidewalk meeting as advertised and discussed. Uh, for those who didn't know, I fell ill, and then my alternate at T and M had a family illness as well. So uh, we tried to work uh as best as we could, but we were unable to attend. So I wanted to apologize to everyone about that situation.
We're actually very grateful you didn't show up, so thank you very much for not sharing your illness.
Lori kept yelling at me because I kept calling. I was having panic attacks. Uh, so, uh, but uh, still going with the sidewalk, uh, we are working on the plans, and uh Lori and I were talking about some different items, uh, one of which is PennDOT is changing their permitting system, and basically every permit that's out there right now has to be resubmitted by May 9th. And we're in, we're in line to do that. If you don't, whether you are municipality, a county, a developer, you go back, they reset the clock on you. It would become a brand-new application. Um, not sure why. It was just, it was announced. So that's, they are changing some of their software, so maybe that's what they're doing to make their lives easier, but we're, we're going to work according uh to that. Um, and then finally, just a, just a reminder to the township, uh, residents, there's, uh, there's no planning commission meeting this upcoming Wednesday. It had been canceled, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, thank you.
That's it.
Great. Chief, come on up.
First, to get out of the way, the uh monthly report, uh, just make note that the business checks, for some reason, were not run for that, so I'll get the updated report to you as soon as I can.
Okay, appreciate it.
Everything else is there.
Okay.
The second thing I wanted to address, uh, I believe Lori forwarded to all of you back in October, the end of October, uh, an action that Eric Shalas took on his way to work. Um, in discussion with him, for some personal reasons that are, I think are very valid, he didn't want a big to-do or a public presentation, but I did present him with the Medal for Heroism for the Police Department, um, last week for his actions. Uh, he, if not for the fact that he had been driving by, that she probably would not have survived. Um, and we're all grateful for that and for the action that he took. Sometimes you're just put in the right place for the right reason at the right time, and that's, that's kind of what happened here. So I apologize for not doing this in a public way, but it was at his personal request, and if any of you need to know behind the scenes, I can explain it to you, but it was a valid reason, in my opinion, so.
I, I appreciate that, and please pass along I appreciate that, and please pass along our goodwill to him as well, appreciate all you, all you do, especially in times like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Anything from the power company? Anything you all want to add? Not on the agenda, but...
You tell me.
You had your time light at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, look, first, I want to say that if the tractor trailer didn't make it past me, it sure as heck was not making it past Martha. So, if they didn't hear me, they'd have heard her. No, you have our monthly report, and if you need anything from us, let us know, so...
And that will be my last time in the township truck for a litter pickup.
It'll never be the same again.
It's okay.
Fair enough. Anything for us?
Don't think so.
Let us know.
Great.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Awesome. Next up, our discussion for agenda items for upcoming workshops. Lori, if you'd like to take the lead on this?
Yes, so, for the April workshop, which, just as a reminder for everybody, because it surprised me today with the way the calendar fell, the workshop is next week, so we only have one week in between business meeting and workshop. So, the plan for next week's workshop is there's going to be a presentation by Simone Collins, they're a landscape architect firm who does a ton of master plans all over, not just this county, but all over in Pennsylvania for open space, they're, I mean, tons of different projects. So, they're gonna give kind of a master planning 101 presentation to just kind of give the board an understanding of what the process could look like. They have, they have provided a proposal that, that we will also talk about at that meeting, to do grant writing for the purposes of applying for a grant for the master plan. So, it's not hiring them to do the master plan, it's hiring them to write the grant to try to get the money to do the master plan. That, so we'll talk about that, they'll explain, they'll explain it more eloquently than I can at, at the meeting on the 24th. The other thing we're intending to do that night is an overview and an update on the status of all of the various ongoing township projects that staff are, are working on, that we've been working on, were just starting, or that we're planning, just so that everybody has an understanding of everything that, that we have going on.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good time to do that, with Andrew coming on board, I think it's, um, it's a good thing to do.
Yeah, we usually try to do it around January, we couldn't do that this year because of the weather, we ended up having our business meeting being on the workshop date, and then we had other, other conflicts on the other workshops, so, yeah, so that's the plan for, for next week. We have some other requests for workshop items that we can talk about. We've had a representative from the Phoenixville Council on Affordable Housing reach out, they, they want to come and make a presentation to the board, so when time permits, we can, we can slot them in. So...
I mean, it sounds like April's, that's gonna cover a lot.
I don't think we can accommodate anything else on April. Yeah.
So, the, the, pro representatives coming in April, too?
No.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
No, they've just asked.
Okay.
Yeah.
I always forget, the PSAT's voting questions, do we do that at a business meeting, or do we do that in a workshop meeting?
We are, I have them, I just got them.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm gonna circulate them to you all, and then my thought was, because I've gone through them, and I don't particularly think that anything requires a whole lot of, is going to require a whole lot of time or attention, so my strategy, I'm gonna submit them, circulate them to all of you, you can look at them, I'll give you my recommendations, if there are any, that I think we should vote in a different way. I did not identify any.
There was that email that was sent, I don't know if any other board member received it, but I got it, and it was about the OSHA, extra OSHA requirements.
I saw that.
Did you get that, too? Okay, it was, so it wasn't just sent to me. Is that one of the ones that's coming up for a vote?
No. But that's different, well, because that's already legislation that's pending in the House.
Oh, okay.
The PSAT's, the PSAT's resolutions, that whole exercise is just to help PSATs as a whole, like, as an organization, kind of set their legislative agenda, and the resolutions come out of the Resolutions Committee, and oftentimes, it's, a lot of them come from the western part of the state, and they're just, it's just, it's just exactly what it is, it's setting their legislative agenda. But no, there's nothing, that's already legislation that's pending in the House, and PSATs is already opposing that. That's why you got the email, because that came out of their, their new software that they're using to...
So, that's something that we just need to keep an eye on, but we don't really need to voice anything or do anything?
PSATs is already lobbying against it.
Okay.
And, and PSATs itself is before our next regular meeting, so if you do want to take action, it would be at the workshop session.
Correct. Yep. And that is normally when we, to answer your original question, usually, we do it at a workshop. Last year, we did it at a business meeting, because PSATs was earlier last year.
Okay.
So, we couldn't, we couldn't make it to the workshop.
Okay.
I think we're good on agenda items for our next workshop meeting. No announcements, I take it? Nothing on agenda? Great. I will open up to public comment, illustrious public. If you'd like to come up, come on up. Name and address, you know the drill.
So, basically, what I've been doing is comparing different property tax rates for the different townships in Chester County, just to see how we compare with other townships. And, for example, East Pike Land is at 0.5, Charleston, .75, Tridifern is 4.5. So, basically, my question is, why are we much more similar in terms of the property tax rate to the larger townships versus East Pike Land, which I kind of think we are most similar to? So, basically, I'd like to explore that question in some format. So, any comments? Can you?
I, I can't give you a definitive reason as to why, especially because I wasn't here when they were set.
Yeah.
It, it's probably also gonna involve more than just comparing the total value, but like, what those taxes are actually going towards, like, for example, do these townships have open space? Tax base, and how does that?
They actually have more than, that's Skookel Township.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's more than just comparing flat numbers, but the, the overall, like, structure of it as well, and the needs of the township, what their tax base looks like, et cetera. So, there's a lot of factors that go into it. So, but again, speaking of someone who didn't set it for Skookel and hasn't done a comparative analysis, it's hard for me to really give you any kind of concrete answer.
Would anyone from the board be interested in kind of like doing a comparison, a closer comparison, just to see where, where the differences lie?
So, it, that is certainly one lens to look at it, the other is, we have our budget, and we have our needs, and we set our taxes accordingly. It's, it's, if other townships run themselves differently, that's, that's on them. I mean, as Lori has brought up previously in this, in this meeting, and in many other meetings, we budget very conservatively, so that factors in as well, we run our budget differently than other, than other townships do. So, it's not that I'm necessarily against the exercise, I just think it would be, it would take a lot to really root out any kind of root causes, just because there's a litany of factors that could go into play there. So, I, it would be a lot of effort to say it, and, and from a budgetary standpoint, I don't know if anything that come out of that would really change anything from our perspective either, because at the end of the day, we're still beholden to what our budget is, and just because they're lower somewhere else doesn't mean we can just slash our property taxes here and not expect any kind of knock-on effects. We'd have to cut spending somewhere as well.
But, for example, with the renovation project, maybe not do the more extravagant option and go with the more conservative...
Yeah.
So, basically, that, and I'll try to explore, compare East Pike Land and, and Skookel a little bit more carefully, and maybe report back to you what I find out.
Sure. I've, I've never turned down information.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Absolutely. With that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.